Good evening. We're going to be opening up this workshop at this time. And we're going to be having a, the first part of this evening will be assessing and revaluation presentation from Director Healy. There we go. Please continue, sir. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Bill Healy. I'm the chief assessor for the city. I've been in this position for seven years now. I have over 25 years' experience in the assessing field and have done a few different revaluations and understand the process. Unfortunately, it looks like we're headed in that direction in Lewiston as well. My presentation tonight's going to be on Lewiston tax assessments, how they compare to state guidelines, and again, why we will likely need a revaluation sooner rather than later. I'd like to start by showing you the assessing standards that the state provides us that we have to follow. The maximum assessment ratio is 110%. The minimum is 70. Of course, ideal is 100%. The maximum level of assessment quality, that's an indication of how far most of your sales are from the average ratio. And 20% is the maximum, 10% is ideal. Currently, we do have very good equity in the city. We're at 12%. But it's, we have good equity, but the assessments are extremely low, as you probably all know, especially Council LaChapelle working in the real estate business like he does, and I believe you as well, Council McCarthy. So the next slide is, I wanted to show you this. This is how we calculate the tax rate. It's really a basic mathematical equation. We take the net to be raised by property tax and divide it by our total valuation base. As you can see in fiscal '22, the net to be raised was $58,085,044. Our total taxable valuation base was $2,555,380,000. When you divide the net to be raised by the taxable valuation base, you arrive at a tax rate of $28,26,000 for fiscal '22. The reason I want to show this is there's only a couple of ways you can lower the tax rate. One is you decrease the amount that needs to be raised, two, or you increase the taxable valuation, or a combination of both. There's no other way to lower the rate. I know a lot of people get mystified and think it's some magical number. It's just a basic mathematical equation. Next is a certified ratio, which is a little confusing. The state law allows the assessor to pick a ratio that's within 10% of what the state determines our assessment ratio is. So in fiscal '22, the state said that our assessment ratio was 74%. Because I have that 10% variance, I can claim a certified ratio of 81%. Just so you'll know, it's already going to go down in fiscal '23. It looks like our assessment ratio with the state's going to be 71, and we'll probably be certifying 78, is my guess. It's early right now, but I think that's where we're headed. I want to show you this as well. This is a slide that shows what happens to our homestead exemption. And as you can see in the different certified ratios we've had over the last three fiscal years, it started at 88%, went to 84%, then it was 81%. And as I said, more than likely in FY '23, it's going to be 78%. The state only reimburses us based on that certified ratio. We cannot claim 100% on the homestead. That's why it's not $25,000. We get that question a lot. If we don't raise you, the city would have to pay the difference. So our reimbursement is based on the certified ratio. What I want to show you now is the different classes of property and where the ratios stand for those classes, or at least where they stood in fiscal '22. 42% of our tax base is residential, one-to-three-family properties, and that ratio was 74%. Commercial, including four-plus-family dwellings, was 35% of our tax base with an 81% ratio. Industrial properties, 5%, with an 81% ratio. And utilities such as Central Main Power and Brookfield Hydro, it's 18% of our tax base with a 94% ratio. Most classes, you want to make sure that you try to keep within 10% of your overall ratio. So as you'll see, once you get a little later on the presentation, there's certain class, namely commercial, that we'll probably see a tax reduction if we do a revaluation. It's just the way the numbers work. What I want to show here is the different state valuations over the last five years versus what the city valuation was. And it also indicates what our tax rate was, but what the state determined our rate was, which are called a fair value rate. It's what they calculate based on the assessment ratio for the municipality. So as you can see, the most recent year, the state determined that we're $2.5 billion in a tax base, and we're just under $2 billion, just over $2 billion for city value. Our tax rate was 28,26, but in reality, the effective tax rate or the full value rate was actually 23,14. I like to show that because it, we do hear a lot about our tax rate being so high, but our effective tax rate is really not that much higher than the most, the other larger municipalities. And of course, if we do a revaluation, we'd likely see a tax rate that's much lower than 28,26, obviously. I want to show you a few examples of what would happen if we increased valuations versus where we're currently at. So a house with a current assessment valuation of $150,000, we, our homestead is $20,250, so the net taxable is $129,750. You multiply that by our tax rate of 28,26, and you get a tax levy of $36,67 per year. If we factored that $150,000 divided by our ratio of 74%, you would get a new assessment, a new valuation of $22,700. The homestead would be $25,000, and your net taxable value would be $177,700. But our tax rate, as you can see, would be much lower. Again, that's factored down 26% from where it is now to 2091. And essentially, the taxes stay the same, as you can see. And it's really important to point out, because if we do, if and when we do a revaluation, you have to be very aware that we can't really increase the budgets too much, because if you do, then people are going to see a tax increase no matter what. If we can keep the tax, I don't want to tell you to do your jobs. Don't get me wrong. That's not, I don't do that part. I just, it's important to point out that keeping budgets close and tight would be important in making sure people's taxes don't increase too much. What I want to do on this next slide is show you another example using the same model, but only decreasing the tax rate by 21%. So instead of dropping it, the full, you know, 26%, I made it 5% higher. And as you can see, you have the same model, but the taxes are much higher, you know? So it's a few hundred dollars difference, even in a 5% increase in budget. So it's really important, as I stated, to make sure that we try to keep things in line so the taxes aren't too high once the revaluation is completed. And finally, on this last slide, it's just an example of what could happen to a commercial property based on where we're at. If you had a current value of $800,000 by our current rate, the tax levy is $22,608. Because commercial properties are at 81%, we're residential 74%, you would likely see a shift from the commercial base to the residential base. There's no way around it. It's all the way the percentages work. And if we do a revaluation, the commercial would likely see a reduction, and residential would likely see an increase. That's all the slides I have. I know I talk fast. I'm sorry. Happy to answer any questions you might have. Just to give you an idea of some basics on when you do a revaluation, what happens. Typically, you'll see a third of the properties will see a tax increase, a third of the properties stay the same, and a third will actually see a reduction. That's fairly common. What you'll also see is about 10% of the property owners will informally appeal their assessments. So that's a fair amount, and it keeps you busy through the first phase of the, well, not the first phase. When the valuation notices go out, then people have a chance to meet with the assessors and the assessor's agents to discuss the evaluations, to make, to see, first of all, where, how did you arrive at that number? Is it fair? And is there something wrong? Do we need to make a correction? And we hope that's not the case, but usually, like I said, my experience is about 10%. Far, as far as a timeframe, I talked to a few firms that do revaluations. It's about an 18-month process from start to finish. So, you know, in order for, if we started the revaluation, say, in calendar year '23, it would likely be that the valuations would be in place for fiscal '25, so the summer of, July 1st of 2024, we'd have the, hopefully have the values in place.
When was the last time we did a revaluation?
Well, there was a revaluation done in Lewiston in 2006. Unfortunately, it was right when the Great Recession hit. The market started turning, and the council made a vote, took a vote to table the revaluations. It was never implemented. There was some valuation increases, adjustments to land made in 2008, but there has been nothing since. And basically, we're really running off a lot of cost schedules that were developed way back in 1988. So that's why with new construction, we have a very, very difficult time getting anywhere near what people are paying for new homes.
Comments from the council or questions? Counselor Gilinas?
Thank you for that presentation. So are you saying that the last revaluation that was done prior to 2006 was 1988?
That's correct.
Okay. Could you also repeat for me, what is the percentage of folks that appeal the valuations typically?
It's about 10% of the property owners. We have 11,600 properties, so I wouldn't be surprised if we had 11, 1200 that would appeal.
Okay, thank you.
How many, of that number, how, how many, I guess, assessments are actually sustained versus like changed?
I would say it's about 3, 3%, 4%. Some people, I mean, it's a mass appraisal, so it's a model you create to fit all properties into it. So there are going to be properties that don't fit the model, that need to be looked at on an individual basis. And usually, by experience, about 3% will see some type of reduction. Most people will come in, understand what the process was, or is that we followed, and then determine that their assessment is actually fair. And we see that quite often. A lot of people just need a better understanding of the process.
Since this hasn't been done for quite some time, I guess, 1988, will there be an education component for residents?
Absolutely. Yes. Very, very important. Part of the whole thing is customer relations. Sure.
I'm imagining you on YouTube videos, so yeah.
I believe that's what the city of Portland did.
Further questions from the council? Counselor McCarthy?
Could you just explain briefly what goes into reevaluating a single-family home?
Sure.
What aspects are, you know?
So really, the big thing, we do a pretty good job. We continue to do four-year reviews in the city. So we're out there looking at property all the time. So I feel confident that our inventory is pretty good. What happens is, the biggest change in the, what we're going to see is the cost schedules. They're so far off. I don't think we're that far off on the land truly. I really think it's a cost schedule for construction. And so what's going to happen? We're going to determine, first, land value, make sure that's accurate. I believe we are. We're pretty close. Then we're going to look at each property to determine size and grade, quality. Those are all very important factors in the assessment. We've got some tools, new tools that we're going to use. We've got a new aerial photography program called Pictometry. And it'll, it's going to allow us to actually do a lot of inspections right from our desktop and pinpoint which properties might be a problem, and actually go out in the field and inspect those prior to the valuation notices going out. So I think that's going to be really helpful. But really, we're going to, the biggest thing that needs to happen is you review the sales to come up with new cost schedules, land and building, and then, because our cost schedules are market-driven. They're adjusted for the market. So once those are set, then you make sure that your, as I said, land value, grade of the dwelling, size is accurate, and then you test the model against the properties. So, you know, hopefully, when we look at a bunch of the properties, we're going to see that our new assessments are within 95%, 98% of what they paid for the property.
So do you visit every single house, or is this just going by the information that you're in?
We, I don't believe we have to visit every house. We, we're going to have the option, like I said, at Pictometry. We can go up and down the street looking for anything that's different. And the unique part of the program that we purchased is, it'll tell us if something's different. So it's got Change Finder, so it can, you know, if something was added to the property that we didn't know about, it's going to show a red mark, and then that's property we'll go inspect.
Administrator Hunter?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I did share with the school committee last night, the chief assessor has provided some preliminary assessed values for the 2023 budget. So we're looking at an additional $15 million in assessment. So going into this budget, the, like I mentioned last night with the school committee, the, the number that you want to think about is $21,200. That is a penny on the tax rate. So as you're increasing the budget, decreasing the budget, that's how you're going to measure that impact on the tax rate. It's going to be $21,200. So, and we'll talk about this more once we do the budget presentation as well.
Thank you. Further questions from the council? Anything else, Director?
No, other than, as we know, I've been involved in a few revaluations. They're contentious. They can be contentious, and the council, you will likely hear from your constituents. But trust me, we're here to answer any of the questions that they might have. And my office is always open.
We appreciate your service. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
You, too.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would like to introduce Ron Smith and Christine Howe from RH Smith and Company. They are the city's external auditors, or independent auditors, and they're going to present the audit next. So I'll get your presentation.
Please come forward. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi there. See, I'm going to apologize in advance to my glasses aren't really the right prescription, so I'm going to be putting them on and off as we're talking here. So I am Christina Howe. I was the lead auditor for the city side audit this past year. Generally, I'm either here, it's actually mostly remote this year, so we're doing an audit over the course of about three weeks. We do a yellow book audit and the federal compliance audit. The federal compliance audit has to do with all your grant programs. So as we're discussing tonight, it's going to be both the city and education combined together. And as far as the federal compliance audit goes, we actually tested five programs, which was somewhat unusual. And it's just how it works out. There's a whole formula behind it. So we tested two programs on the city side and three programs over on the school side. And we didn't have any comments, which is what you want for your federal compliance audit. And then with the city side, we also didn't have any management letter comments. There was nothing that rose to something that we were, you know, be serious about, that we would be discussing here tonight. And at the end of the day, we issue an opinion on the financial statements, and we gave an unmodified opinion, which means that the financial statements were fairly reported in all material respects. And that's what you want. So we're just going to do a brief overview. Right here, we have the general fund revenues. You'll see that the total revenues were over budget, came in about 4% over what you expected. And intergovernmental revenues and excise taxes were really driving that increase. And when I looked at FY '20, compared it to FY '21, your revenues actually came in about 6% or 7% over the prior year. Here we have your general fund expenditures. So they came in about 6% under budget. And once again, education was really driving that. That's really what jumped out to me when I was looking through this.
We audit a lot of schools, and I can tell you, that's a common trend with the school departments, and a lot of it's COVID-related, you know, still. And I think that that's going to be something that you're going to see for the next few years.
Next, we're getting to the general fund equity. So there's a breakdown on the side, and it just sort of goes over what these different classifications are and what would make up, you know, sort of the internal balances with them. Really, most people are interested in the restricted fund balance. So that's your education general fund, which gets pulled into the city financial statements. And then, assigned fund balances are made up of a few different things, but it's mostly the encumbrances that you're voting on at the end of the year. And those get kind of rolled forward or increased or decreased depending on the board, the council votes. So we're seeing with the restricted fund balance, which is the education, an increase of about 29%. And then the unassigned fund balance for the city actually increased 22% in FY '21. And here we just have like an 11-year look-back period. So you're just seeing that your fund balances are increasing. This is both city and school combined together. You know, it's sort of up and down a little bit. And then the past few years, it's really had a pretty large track upwards. On this slide, it's unassigned fund balance as a percentage of budget. And over on the right, you can sort of see there's the different types of fund balance policies that might be in effect. So sometimes it's based off of the overall expense budget. In Lewiston's case, it's actually based off the revenues. And you have a floor and a ceiling that you're really shooting for with your unassigned fund balances. And you can see that it's increased for Lewiston when you're comparing it to the other municipalities. However, I would just note that for two of the other municipalities on here, we had to use FY ' '20 balances because their financial statements weren't available yet. Now we have the workers' compensation reserve. So this is just the distinction between what the recommended amount for that reserve would be versus what you actually have set aside for it. And within that reserve, you know, it's for any sort of potential claims, any sort of related costs, things like that. So there's an actuarial, actuarial that is done, which is saying that it should really be over $5 million, but you only have about, you know, $1 million in there. So you have a shortfall of about $4.5 million. And finally, we have the debt per capita as compared to other communities. And really, Lewiston's sort of midway. You know, you're not an outlier in what your debt per capita is. You're not the highest, you're not the lowest, when compared to a few other municipalities that are sort of around the same size. So that was the financial statement overview, which is...
We typically do a combined, you know, talk about the, you know, the results of the school audit. And, but I guess I would ask any questions on this first for the city if I get into that.
Any questions from the council? Counselor Scott?
Yeah, so I'm just wondering if you can elaborate. When you talked about the general fund expenditures, and you mentioned that the schools with COVID, how, could you just elaborate on what, explain that a little bit more?
Yeah. So again, you're looking at the period July 1st, 2020, through June 30, 2021. You're right in the heart of a pandemic. So there were certainly, you know, a lot of cost, a lot of, you know, virtually how the whole system of education was being delivered, you know? And certainly, there were costs that were budgeted for before COVID, you know, as you went into that budget year, that just weren't spent. That resulted in unspent budget that basically gets returned back to the, to your general school budget to get recycled again the next year.
Thank you. I appreciate that explanation. Not everybody in the public understands that, and that's why I asked that you just...
Yeah. And as I said, and that's why I wanted to emphasize, that's a typical trend. We do 200 school systems in the state of Maine and Vermont. And that's a typical trend that we're seeing with all school systems. And a lot of it is because of how COVID forced the way to deliver the service of education to the kids.
Thank you.
Counselor LaChapelle?
In reviewing this, were your, the professionals, did you see any, any red flags at any time? Something that would be concerning, something...
So we can get into that now. The city side, I think that, you know, even through some of the trials and turbulations and turnover that you had in your, you know, your fiscal, you know, department and areas, no. You know, I think that the city, city was pretty solid. It was an all-hands-on-deck effort. And the school, yeah, there were some repeat concerns, you know, with the school's finances and, you know, and best practices, I would say. And there were three areas, you know, that we delivered the comments for the school department. As I recall, one of them was the drawdown request for reimbursement programs with the state. There was a significant lapse between the time that the services were expended, where the money that the city and school department expended for those services, to the time a reimbursement request was put in for the state. So it tied up from some city, some city finances for what we would consider a longer period of time. There were no, for lack of a better word, you know, red flags or concerns with perhaps the, you know, how it happened, except that's not a practice you want to be doing, you know, fronting and using your money for reimbursement programs. The concern was, why did it happen? And I think that that was talked with management, certainly understood, and that was two years in a row, you know, for, for that, you know, for that concern. There were some issues with the kids' money over at the school on how that was handled. And, you know, if my recollection serves me, some of the best practices there, you know, there was some, some money that was held, you know, by one of the student accounts for, as I believe it was sports, you know, a large sum of money. And we don't recommend, you know, holding on to large sums of money. You know, that money should have resided in a, in a financial institution. So, so that was an issue, and just some other general best practices with the, with the school. And the other one was with the, you know, I would call the book reconciliations. There were some concerns, you know, and there was a lot of turnover in the school department, but there were some struggles, you know, at the school, you know, regarding the, the bookkeeping, the, the presentation of the books. And, and certainly, there was some third-party assistance that we provided them to, to, to help them, you know, get their, get their books in a way to work with them to, you know, to audit. And that was a repeat finding, and that's certainly a concern, you know, again, and that was an all-hands-on-deck approach to, to working with you, the city, and the school because of the common relationships with all. And, and, and that was a repeat, again, that was a repeat finding. That's, that's a comment you don't want to repeat. You know, that's, that's, that's something you don't want to, you know, you want to get out of that, you know, practice and get into a better practice with that. And I know that there's been a lot of conversations, you know, with the school management, you know, and the city, where we have no doubt, you know, that there's going to be some attention paid. But there were some, there was a buffet of reasons on why that happened. And we're hoping that we can see a lot of improvement for that this year, for sure.
Now you've maybe asked a couple more questions.
I gotta go.
So is it normal, when you make these presentations to Portland, whatever, that you also...
We don't represent Portland. That was just a statistical graph.
So the 200 and some odd other schools that you've represented in Maine and New Hampshire, fair enough?
Mm-hmm.
Do you present the city council with the report that you give to the school department?
Yeah. Depends on what the school department is. The schools that we represent, Lewiston's a different, different animal, you know, the school department, because it's a department of the city. It's a department of the city. So a lot of the departments are, are school administrative districts, the supervisory unions, and they have multiple components to them. So there's a different statutory, you know, DNA for the school departments. In Lewiston's case, they're a department of the school, and I think based on your chatter, that the, that the, that there's an overlap between the city, city, city council, you know, and the oversight.
And you presented us with a report of your concerns.
It's in the cities. It's combined with the cities.
It's in here?
It's, it's, yeah, correct. You'll see an education line item. And in the city's full financial statements, the school department's embedded in the city's full financial statements.
So bear with me for the uneducated person that I might be on this budget situation. How would that... How would that person know that in gleaning this, that there's a problem? Do you write out?
Yeah, you've got a separate letter. Your city administrator has a separate letter regarding some of the things that I had just mentioned.
Okay, so we haven't seen that yet.
Yes, I just got the copy today.
Okay, then I will hold my comments. So I'm going to come back to one more issue. The workers' comp shortfall. Why do we need $5 million for workers' comp shortfall?
Your actuaries say you do.
Okay.
So, so a couple of things, you know, based upon the way the city has its workers' compensation, you know, set up and how you fund it, that what your actuaries are saying based on your service level of claims, you know, this, 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 this benefit, you know, this, this, this service that you provide for workers' compensation, based on your experience rating, it would be for the same for like health insurance and things like that, that workers' comp, you know, they expect, you know, that, that at the end of the year, based on your levels of claims, that you should have $6 million sitting in reserve, to which I think you had about a million and a half sitting in reserve. So, so when you do that math.
One point two.
So when you do that math, a disparity of, of, of what could happen in workers' comp being up at over $6 million, clearly you don't have enough, you know, money set aside. And that's an area that we'll look at. I don't know, you know, the city just went out to a public offering. I don't know how, if, if any, that that impacted any bond rating, you know, that you got. But, you know, but clearly those are the things that they look at as these unfunded, you know, what we call post-employment benefit, you know, post-employment benefits, workers' comp or any type of reserves like that. That's something that typically would be viewed as an outsider to say, okay, do you have a plan? And I'm not sure the city really has a plan, you know, because that's been the way with that workers' compensation. That's been something that had, that, that, there's a, a pattern and a tradition where the city has traditionally not funded that workers' compensation plan to 100% of what the actuaries.
Us or most cities?
So typically, so I would, I would, I would say most, yeah, I'd say that's a fair statement. Most municipalities, you know, I would say it's a fair statement, you know, that as you're trying to survive and you've got some impactful decisions to be made on staffing or levels of service, to literally talk about that number, although it's real, where is it real in your priority scheme as far as keeping the level of service at the same of the city? You know, and I think that that's what's got to be weighted and, you know, and I think that that's a, that's a, a situation that's common in municipalities and, and certainly something that's prioritized. And whether or not Lewiston or, you know, or Auburn or Saco or Freeport or any other municipality would put that in a different priority. We see a lot of municipalities put their priorities with services that they provide as opposed to, you know, coming up with some kind of a plan to say, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna devote $4.5 million more to a number that we're not really sure how it impacts, you know, the, the level of service that we do. But we know that that level of service is going to be impacted if we possibly redirect those resources. But it's a real number and certainly the actuaries and the city of Lewiston, you know, makes it an emphasis to, to, to put the realness, I think, just to put it out there that it, that, that, it's, it's a conversation piece. Where does that conversation piece fall in the line of providing services at the city of Lewiston? Is, I think, the point.
Thank you. Administrator Hunter, one more question.
Please proceed.
Administrator Hunter, are we going to have an opportunity to discuss some of these things at a later date after the presentation?
Certainly, when we can have a workshop on this. I did send out the financial letter, our memo regarding the, not only the fiscal year-end results in a little bit more detail, as well as the semi-annual report. I will like to, I would like to supplement the audit commentary regarding workers' comp. The city is self-insured for workers' comp, first of all. So we have that actuarial evaluation that only those municipalities that are self-insured would have that. These actuarial evaluation is a discounted based upon lifetime claims, medical costs, indemnities, everybody that's got a claim right now at that particular snapshot. It's snapshot at every fiscal year-end. So if I have a black injury and I'm planning on having surgery, let's say, in September, my actuarial valuation may be higher than normal after I get my surgery and get the prognosis. So that's a snapshot as of that particular time that's discounted back at year-end. So we will always have a gap and because we have more of a pay-as-you-go system. We tend to fund that based upon, not only it's a percentage of payroll based upon the risk categories. So it's your level of payroll, fire's going to have X percentage for risk categories, police will have Y percentage, you know, clerical will have another one and so on and so forth. Then what we do is incorporate an administrative overhead cost that we allocate out as well. And we charge this not only internally, you will see the budget on the workers' comp. We share this cost with the school department, the nutrition, water, sewer and stormwater. When we bill outside agencies, we incorporate an overhead charge and they pay a portion of this workers' comp to fill that gap in a little bit more. We had three, three claims that we actually settled at the end of FY '22, which drew those reserves. But the only way we settle is if there's a cost, a long haul cost savings. So that's why we went ahead and settled those claims for this year. So we are now looking at building those reserves back up when we go through the current year budget assessments to recover some of those cash outlays to settle those claims. We should be seeing, unless we have additional claims, we should be seeing a lower actuarial requirement because of that settlement.
Does the school department fall under our workers' comp also?
Yes, they do. And based upon their risk classifications and the claims, you know, that they've been experiencing, that overhead charge is appropriate based upon where the claims are lying.
I don't know if we necessarily need another workshop, maybe a 10, 15 minutes just to bring us up to date. Obviously, some red flags are, are out there and I'd like to know what the red flags are and start addressing some of those issues. Or there might be some very logical reasons. We'd just like to know. Thank you.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you. I, I would just like to circle back to what Counselor LaChapelle was talking about with the school department. So are you doing an individual report to the school department like you're doing here for the school committee?
Correct.
And is that a scheduled date already to come through?
Thursday, I think.
When is it?
I think it's this Thursday.
This Thursday? Is that with the school committee or which is the management of the school department? Do you know? Because I'm, I'm the representative to the school committee from the city and I don't have anything scheduled for that.
Typically, I'm sorry, typically my understanding is it is presented to the finance committee. Christina, do you know?
I don't know. I just.
I know the last two years it's been presented to their school finance committee, if you will.
And I believe that that's the case.
And then the finance committee should be reporting it out to the school committee.
Okay, so if, if, and again, going off of what you're saying, if we are to, maybe not necessarily a workshop, but a further conversation on this, I would appreciate if we had the superintendent of schools here to help and maybe whoever's running the finances part of that conversation for us so that we can have an explanation. I do know that they had to have some, they had turnover in staff that might have been part of some.
Two years in a row.
Correct. So, but I don't know the logistics of that and maybe that would clarify and clarify some of this.
And what I'll say is your school management, you know, certainly has been very proactive, you know, and working with us to, 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 to work through these concerns, you know, that, you know, that reared your head for the past few years. They've been very cooperative and certainly kind of receptive and looking in the mirror, you know, and really how they can address these things. I will say that certainly with your school, school administration for sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Am I to understand that we still have additional presentation from, from you?
I don't, not from the city council.
Oh, okay. All right.
What we do typically, how it works, and I know that they probably wanted to have this advance in the city council. Usually it's done in, I don't know, pre-Christmas-ish, you know. But again, there were some delays this year because of some of the struggles. Typically what's done is we, we, we do simultaneously the school and the city's audit at the same time. We lift the school out of the city and literally do a presentation to the school committee, you know, to a school finance committee, I believe, to, to talk about that. But these are all things that certainly, and I don't know what's been conveyed, you know, out of respect to the school committee, I just don't know what's been conveyed from the school administration to the school committee. But I can tell you this, these are conversations that have been happening for four months over there for sure.
Okay. Counselor LaChapelle?
In, in no ways do I want to project that I have thoughts that somebody in the school department siphoning money out to their pockets or anything like that.
We didn't see that. And we'll make, we'll leave no doubt, but we'll be like, oh, we didn't see that.
Thank you for clearing that up.
By, by no means. And it's just, we have to be stewards of our money and that is the seven of our jobs. We have to be good stewards and that's why we bring you in separately to say.
And your charter basically provides for us to give you this.
I want to know.
Give you this conversation to allow you some opportunity to ask confessions, so.
You're the expert in that field and I want to know, so thank you very much for the honesty. And I just, I think it's fantastic to have the superintendent here. Just, you know, I'm sure there's some logical explanations, but when whoever's watching on TV or finds out later that we had a $7 million and we're, and we have three red flags and they're going to be asking us, and they ask the school representatives and they ask us.
And this by no means is an indictment, you know, on the school and its administration. This is a, this is, this is, this is a relationship. This is a brotherhood, you know, between your largest department of the city, you know, and certainly, hey, how can we help? You know, and I can tell you, there's been a lot of hands extended from your finance department to that school to literally have that. And like I said, I, you know, I, I, what I don't want you to hear is these red flags, these concerns. What I want you to hear is the partnership of all hands on deck to deal with these things.
We used to have a really good finance director.
Yeah, yeah, I've heard.
Further comments from the council? Administrator Hunter, anything to add?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Anything from either of you?
No, we, we embrace a conversation. If there needs to be any joint conversations had between, you know, the city and the school, we would enjoy participating in that conversation for sure.
Thank you both very much.
Appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening. That concludes the workshop. We will see you back here at 7:00. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and we will be led by Lilly Gish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. Unfortunately, I would like to say, uh, we're very saddened to hear about the death of Megan Alexander, who passed away recently, a city employee, and I will read this, and then we'll have a moment of silence. Megan Alexander served as the city's billing special, city's utility billing specialist in the finance department, a hardworking municipal employee for over four years. Megan passed away last week, she fought a short but courageous battle with cancer, Megan enjoyed having fun, sweets, challenging herself, including starting back to school for a degree in accounting, but her most important task that she loved, that she loved was being a mom. Greatest sympathies are extended to Megan's family, friends, and municipal workers. I never had the chance to know Megan, but she sounds absolutely lovely. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, please be seated. Добрый вечер, Луистин! Яксправе! That's Ukrainian for, "Good evening, Luistin, how are you?" I have friends who have family in both Kyiv and Berdansk, and I hope they continue to remain safe and that this war is over soon. We are happy to have the Luistin, Luistin High School girls' hockey team who just won the state championship, congratulations to all of you. I will go through. We have Coach Ron Dumont here, we also have Assistant Coaches Earl Saint-Hilaire and Scott Lobes here as well, a round of applause for them as well. We have a proclamation, which I will head there and read, that's where the folders are, and then I will be happy and honored to give each of you a copy of the proclamation. I'm heading up there now. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Recognizing the Luistin High School 2022 Varsity Girls Hockey State Champions, whereas the Luistin High School Varsity Girls Hockey Team is commended for a stellar season demonstrating athletic ability, camaraderie, and champion success, and whereas, they represented the city of Luistin as 2022 KVAC Champions, 2022 Girls Hockey North Regional Champions, and ultimately as the 2022 Girls Hockey State Champions, and whereas, their performance demonstrates the consistent commitment and perseverance that they have put forth to succeed on multiple fronts, and whereas, parents, families, family members, coaches, and the Luistin public school system as a whole are also commended for their unwavering encouragement and support of these young women as they pursue the ultimate state championship goal, and whereas, the team effort was effectively executed by Avaya Disjardins, Rebecca Lucier, Tori Saint-Hilaire, Lilly Gish, Sadie Morgan, Kristen Lechance, Charlotte Cludier, Avra Jefroy, Courtney Lechance, Alyssa Marku, Leah Dubey, Leah Landry, and Kim McLaughlin, and whereas, the Luistin Varsity Girls Hockey Team is also applauded for making history and is now has four state championships, which is more than any other girls' hockey program in Maine. I have here 2009, 2015, 2020, and 2022, and whereas, the Luistin Varsity Girls Hockey Team has clearly sent the message that big blue girls' hockey is in a class of its own. Now therefore, I, Carl Elsheline, Mayor of Luistin, Maine, do hereby proclaim March 1, 2022, as Luistin High School Girls Hockey Day within the city of Luistin in tribute to the team's magnificent season and for making Luistin shine. Thank you so much.
Girl power, just really proud.
Ava Disjardins, Avaya? Thank you so much, congratulations. Rebecca? Congratulations. Tori? Congratulations. Lilly? Thanks for leaving us in the pledge, and congratulations. Sadie? Congratulations. Kristen? Congratulations. Charlotte? Congratulations. Ava? Congratulations. Courtney? Congratulations. Alyssa? Congratulations. Leah? Dubey? Congratulations. Leah Landry? Congratulations. Kim McLaughlin? Congratulations. If you will join me and the council for a photo, that would be great. And the coaches?
We have trouble with this.
They don't look mean and nasty. They don't look like they're mean and nasty.
Great, thank you.
I would love that.
I didn't know I had to.
We gotta work, we asked them to lead us in the school song, and they don't know our school song.
I don't know the official version, so I'll.
I'm back now, Counselor LaChapelle, thank you. And. Counselors, please, thank you. I would like to also mention that Leah Landry, can you please raise your hand? Okay, there we go, sorry. The senior captain. Perhaps at another time, counselors, thank you. Leah Landry, senior captain, was named the Becky Schaefer Award winner, an award given annually by hockey coaches and is symbolic of the top senior girls' hockey player in the state, and Leah, you, uh, you are the first girl to win this award for Luistin High School. And Leah, you are the first girl to win this award for Lewiston High School. Congratulations. Thank you very much for coming and thank you, thank you for being amazing.
Thanks for having me.
Take care. Thank you Administrator Hunter. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
We are ready to begin.
Thank you. All roll call votes for this meeting will begin with the Counselor of Ward Six.
May I have a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Counselor Pease, followed by Counselor Clement. Any discussion? We don't need to go to public comment for this?
You do not, no.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Obstein.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Obstein.
Ward Five?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of six to zero.
And now it's the time for public comment. Any member of public comment may make comments regarding issues pertaining to Lewiston City Government. This period is reserved for non-agenda items. Public comment is also allowed during individual agenda items. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Please stand, please state your name for the record and please indicate if you are a Lewiston resident. Because this is the business meeting of the City Council, all questions should be directed to the mayor, who will ask staff to follow up at a future time. It is illegal for the City Council to allow comments related to personnel matters. All personnel complaints should be made directly to the City Administration Office. With that, yes, is there anyone who would like, do we have anyone who would like to have public comment at this time? Madam Clerk, the first agenda item.
Sure. Item number one, public hearing and a renewal application for a special amusement permit for live entertainment for DaVinci's 150 Mill Street. Requested action to grant a special amusement permit for live entertainment to DaVinci's 150 Mill Street.
May I have a motion? Counselor LaChapelle, followed by Counselor Pease. Discussion at the council? Public comment? Back to the council? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number two?
Item number two, public hearing and final passage regarding an amendment to the Parks and Recreation Ordinance to incorporate the new Mike McGraw Park as a recognized city park. Requested action to approve final passage, the proposed amendments to the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 54, Parks and Recreation, regarding the addition of Mike McGraw Park to the list of city parks.
Mr. Mayor, approve.
May I have a motion?
Move for passage.
Counselor Clement, followed by Counselor Pease. Discussion? You know, I would just like to say that I just got discussion with Administrator Hunter, and I forgot who said what, but basically, one of us asked the other person if they were going to sled down the hill, and then the other one said, "I will if you will," and I don't think either of us slid down the hill.
I let the police chief take my ride.
I believe if we have that video available, we should make that available on the city's YouTube site.
Mr. Mayor?
Further, yes, Counselor Scott.
I believe we did have three counselors that went down that hill.
Would they like to be recognized at this time?
Well, I'm just saying.
I'm very proud of you. Further discussion from the council? Public comment? Back to the council. Madam Clerk.
Counselor from Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
And Ward Five?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Item number three?
Item number three, public hearing and final passage regarding an amendment to the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, Article 15 pertaining to the licensing of marijuana businesses. Requested action to approve final passage of the proposed amendments to the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 22, Article 15, excuse me, adult use and medical marijuana.
Move for passage, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Clement, may I have a second? Counselor McCarthy? Discussion? Public comment?
Mayor Shalene and members of the Lewiston City Council, just want to thank you for being here tonight and for all the work you do for our community.
Excuse me, can you, can you please identify yourself?
Yes. My name is Alex McMahon. I live at 46 Lisbon Street. I'm here today to talk about the special language needed in the ordinance to allow existing businesses the ability to transition to a different state license type in the future. This has more to do with the next agenda item, so I'll be saving my testimony on that topic for that agenda item. I just wanted to get up now to prepare you for the fact that members of the Medco ownership team will be presenting testimony on the next agenda item. I will be presenting last, and I'll be happy to provide answers to any questions you may have after my next testimony. Thank you, and I'll be back up on the podium shortly.
Further public comment? Director Hediger? Is there anything that you'd like to add to this agenda item?
I'm losing it.
Okay. Back to the council. Counselor LaChapelle?
Just a couple of questions. On page six, the following do not require a business license, personal use each person, 21 years of older. Is there a, is there a plant count on that? How many plants they're allowed to have?
Yeah, I see what you're talking about. There may be, I don't know. Again, that's something that's regulated by the state, not necessarily municipality.
So, we're not gonna.
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so we're not gonna require, to how many plants, after how many plants are you gonna require a license for somebody? Is it stated someplace in here and I just missed it? I thought I read it.
If you're running marijuana business, if you're growing marijuana for yourself at your, at your home, as long as it's indoors, you don't need a license from the city. There may be limitations as to how much marijuana you can grow. I think there is with respect to medical. I'm not sure what it is for adult use. Medical, it used to be six mature plants. I'm sure somebody in here could correct me.
Each stage, I believe. Is it robbing each stage? Three, six, six and six?
It's mature plants. So, I mean, it doesn't count for vegetative plants. So, for flowering.
So, there's three stages if I'm not mistaken. Two?
Vegetated, and then when you flip it to a different life cycle, to flowering state, that becomes the mature plant. You can have six mature plants.
So, our existing rules and the way it's still drafted here is that it was never our intent to regulate marijuana being grown for personal use at someone's home as long as it's grown indoors. There's language in here that specifically says you can't grow outdoors even if it's for your own use. If we find out about it, that's when we address it. We don't necessarily go looking for it when people are growing these, you know, growing marijuana for their own use.
Thank you. Further discussion? Counselor LaChapelle?
In page 13, Section Nine, Subsection C, a locking safe or its functional equivalent. Why did we even put that in there? That was starting to require them having safes and why is that relevant?
Again, that's existing language. We haven't changed anything there. That was language that we initially took when we drafted this ordinance three or four years ago. We weren't looking to make any changes with respect to that.
I just found it, if they want to leave their stuff out and it gets robbed, it's pretty stupid of them, but that's.
Yeah.
I just, I, I don't know why we're making them.
We probably don't need to, quite frankly. The state has very onerous requirements with respect to security, much more onerous than what the city requires. When the police department goes in, they're making sure that they have an active security system in place with newer standards, as I understand, especially for adult use. It's a pretty rigorous standard that businesses have to meet with respect to security systems. So, to your point, it's only in their best interest to make sure that the property is secured as well.
So, that's not something we wrote up? That's something we gleaned from the state and just put.
Potentially. Honestly, that's language, again, that's three or four years. I'm not sure exactly where we would have got that language from at that time.
Counselor Scott?
So, I was part of that process back a few years ago when we were discussing that. And if I recall, this is actually language that came from the state when we were started to, when they started looking and putting the word to this ordinance originally, on this locking and the safing and the locking of the buildings and that part. All state language.
Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To address Counselor LaChapelle's concerns, I can see that as a deterrent effect. There are people out there, perhaps younger people, that would see this as an opportunity, and I think we have to be reasonable about securing it and keeping it from those that couldn't legally possess it. That's, that's all I read into that. I don't think it's anything onerous at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Clerk? Can you remind me, have we already gone to public comment for this agenda item?
You have, yes.
Oh, excellent. Thank you. We're ahead of schedule. Further comment from, from the council? Madam Clerk, please call, or, sorry, once again, Director Hediger, did you have anything further to add?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number four?
Item number four, our public hearing and final passage regarding an amendment to the Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Seven, Section 21 pertaining to performance standards for marijuana businesses. Requested action to approve final passage of the proposed amendments to the Zoning and Land Use Code, Article Seven, Section 21 pertaining to performance standards for marijuana businesses.
Mr. Mayor?
May I have a motion?
So, move for passage.
Counselor McCarthy, followed by Counselor Clement. Discussion? Counselor Scott? Counselor Harriman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'm sure all of our, all of my fellow counselors have seen the memo from Director Hediger regarding a potential, potential amendment to this motion. And I guess since Director Hediger is, is at the podium now, maybe he could just briefly explain this, this proposed amendment?
Sure. So.
Please.
Just someone we thought everything was clear, right? Mr. McMahon, who was up here earlier speaking, brought to my attention that there may be an issue as far as the change of use of establishments from the state's perspective. Lewiston doesn't make a distinction between medical and adult use marijuana. We, we look at those businesses as just marijuana businesses. It's, it's an effort to make it easier for us regulating these types of establishments. Apparently, the state does have a concern, though, when you go from medical to adult. They look at it as a whole new type of business, a whole new type of application. And because they refer to the city's language with respect to buffers from schools, if we don't have specific language in there that addresses an existing establishment, then apparently, medical uses that want to convert to adult use would not meet our standards. We've talked over the last several meetings about non-conforming establishments. What does that mean for establishments that are already operating or maybe have pending licenses? In the sense that we don't necessarily want to impact them if they've already made a commitment to improve a building or they're already operating somewhere. The language that you have, the memo that was shared with you folks last night, and as well as I gave you a handout, that should have been on front of your desks there, has some language to change, specifically in Article 12, Section 21, 3. The ordinance that you had before you, in your packet, Section 3 was just literally one paragraph. The thought now is to change that into two paragraphs, a section A and a B, to make it abundantly clear that if you have an existing business either with an active or a pending license as of the effective date of this ordinance, so if this passes this evening, the effective date would be March 31st. So, if you have a license that's either active or pending prior to that date, you would be legally non-conforming. And we put two different paragraphs in there, and as I mentioned, I think it might be somewhat duplicative and overkill, but based upon the conversations that the folks from Medco have had with their attorney, it seems as though that this might be the best route to ensure that a non-conforming use can continue to operate if any business wants to change from adult, excuse me, from medical to adult. I don't know how many businesses this is really gonna impact. They actually may be the only ones. We do have a pending license for another operation that I made reference to in the memo, that, that could be an issue if for some reason they wanted to change from medical to adult. So, we're kind of covering our bases there. Furthermore, as I noted, that's Martell School, and the likelihood of that becoming a school is pretty slim, so maybe a moot point entirely. Other than that, there are no other changes being suggested from what was initially proposed last time. The buffers are, I think we've, we've gone through those, as far as the buffers being a thousand feet from pre-existing schools and childcare facilities, 500 feet from parks and playgrounds, 100 feet from residential uses and residential districts, and then 500 feet setback. You can have two establishments next to each other. The third establishment has to be 500 feet. Doing the buffers from the property lines, no more of this ordinary course of travel. I think that's it. So, if the council is in favor of changing, what I would suggest is incorporating into your motion the language that was included in this memo this evening.
Counselor McCarthy?
I so moved that we include that language. I think the, the idea behind the changes we made was not to impact any existing business in any way. And it looks like this covers our bases. Someone was active and on top of things to bring this to our attention, and I'm glad they did because it could have impacted them quite a bit. So, I move that we include the language in the, the language change in the ordinance.
Second there.
We, we have a motion, and then a first and a second, and discussion on this motion? Do we, Madam Clerk, what is the correct.
Right. So, Counselor McCarthy can correct me if I'm wrong, but if I'm understanding it, his motion basically is to amend by substitution, paragraph number three, which is the one printed in your book, and it would be, paragraph three would be removed, and it would be replaced with the new paragraphs 3A and 3B.
That is correct.
Thank you very much. And I'm sorry, I missed who seconded that amendment. I'm so sorry.
Counselor Harriman?
Thank you, Counsel.
Point of order?
Counselor LaChapelle?
To amend the original motion, does it not have to go to the two people who made that motion? The first motion?
No, anyone can make a motion.
I thought they were asking the original people to amend their motion. So, when you explain, my apologies.
Okay. So, I might be confused, Counsel. It was my understanding that it was originally moved by Counselor McCarthy and seconded by Counselor Clement. So, the motion that's pre-printed in your book to approve final passage, et cetera, is on the floor, and then Counselor McCarthy, seconded by Counselor Harriman, is making an amendment by substitution to remove the original paragraph three and replace it with the new 3A and B.
So, if we just amend the original motion, we don't have to vote twice?
You do have to vote twice because some folks may not be in agreement with the amendment, so they have to have an opportunity to vote on the amendment separately. And then if it passes by majority, then the amendment is incorporated into the main motion, so then the whole ordinance would be approved. Thank you.
Discussion, so is the amendment now on the floor, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Discussion on the amendment from counselors?
Move the question, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk, do we go to public comment for this amendment?
You have not gone to public comment yet, so you certainly can, yes.
Public comment on this amendment?
Mayor Shalene and members of the Lewiston City Council, thank you very much for the opportunity. My name is Rob Laverdiere. I live at 141 Gateon Road. I am one of the six partners of the Healing Community Medco, which operates several businesses in Lewiston, including a retail store on Lisbon Street, a retail store on Main Street, and a manufacturing facility on Lisbon Street. We will soon be operating an additional manufacturing facility with a Class 1, Division 1 laboratory on Outer Lisbon Street. The Medco Partners also operate four cultivation facilities on Main Street and three cultivation facilities on River Road. Our cultivation facilities on Main Street have been operating since 2015, and the Medco Store on Main Street received city approval in 2015. and the Medco store on Main Street received city approval in 2018 and opened in 2019. There was a school built behind Mardens in 2020, well after all of our Main Street businesses were licensed and operating. This does not affect our city license, as the school is not a pre-existing school. This also does, does not affect our state medical license for the same reason. This does, however, affect our eventual transition to an adult-use license with the state. When we apply for an adult-use license with the state, the state will consider the school to be existing before our adult-use license was applied for, therefore considering the school to be a pre-existing school. This puts the future of our five establishments at risk on Main Street. The state will use the distance set by the Lewiston ordinance as the required distance for the state license. Even though the city of Lewiston would not consider these businesses to be new businesses, the state would consider them to be new businesses when applying for the license type. What this means is that the state would only be using the 1,000-foot language from the ordinance without taking into account the language stating that this distance is only from pre-existing schools. This is why we're requesting the proposed language to be added to the ordinance, specifically outlining a different buffer distance for businesses operating before the effective date of the ordinance change. To be as efficient as possible, my partners will speak, and please direct all questions to Alex, and thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Mayor Shaleen and members of the Lewiston City Council. My name is Jacob McMahon, I live at 277 Lisbon Street, and I'm one of the Medco Partners. Thank you for your time and attention. We have been active in this community for years and are looking forward to staying active in Lewiston for decades to come. As long as we continue to navigate the abundant regulatory changes, we will be able to do so. At this point in time, there is a nuance in the differences between city and state law that has come to our attention, that would need to be addressed in order for our longevity in the community to be preserved. We have checked with the State of Maine Office of Marijuana Policy, and there is concern about how the upcoming change to the Lewiston ordinance regarding the buffer from schools could affect our Main Street store and cultivation facilities if and when we transition from the medical market to the adult-use market. While Medco is committed to ensuring that the medicinal properties of the cannabis plant are kept at the forefront of the industry, as exemplified by our name, the ultimate shift of the consumer base from the medical market to the adult-use market is beyond our control. While we would like for our main medical market to remain strong, precedents set by other mature market states show that the swallowing up of the medical market by the adult-use market is inevitable. When the time comes that the consumer base shifts to the adult-use market, Medco will need to follow suit and transition our state licensing from medical to adult use. This is not a problem as far as the city of Lewiston is concerned, as the city does not differentiate between a medical store and an adult-use store. The city ordinance considers all cannabis stores to be the same for all requirements, performance standards, and licensing purposes. The state of Maine, however, does differentiate between medical stores and adult-use stores. Therefore, while we would be considered legally non-conforming by the city, if there were any changes to the ordinance that we would not conform with, the state would consider us to be legally non-conforming for the license type which we currently hold. This would restrict our future inevitable move to the adult-use market, which would ultimately represent an eventual sunset on our Main Street operations. I ask the council to add our proposed language to the ordinance. This language has already been reviewed by Director Hediger and will be read momentarily by Alex McMahon. Please feel free to save any questions you may have for the end of Alex's testimony. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Mayor Shaleen and Lewiston City Council members, thank you for hearing us tonight and considering our concerns. My name is Joseph Johnson, I live in Auburn, I am also one of the Medco Partners here in Lewiston. We have a concern that the school was built behind Mardens after we were in operation could jeopardize our ability to transition to the adult-use market in the future unless we add some specific language to the ordinance. For city purposes, the new school behind Mardens would not be considered pre-existing as all of our cannabis businesses were licensed before the new school was built. For state purposes, however, the new school would not be considered pre-existing to our medical operations, as our medical operations were there first. The big issue comes with the state adult-use statute, which would consider the new school to be pre-existing to any potential adult-use license. The public impact is identical regardless of the license type, as the use of the space remains the same. As far as the public's concerned, cannabis is being sold at 741 Main Street no matter what, regardless of whether we maintain a medical license with the state or an adult-use license with the state. In addition to our eventual transition having no public impact, the use would still be very much allowable according to the intent of the city ordinance. Along the ordinary course of travel, which is, which is the current language in the city ordinance, the entrance to our retail store is approximately 1,200 feet from the property line of the new school and closer to 1,500 feet from the actual building. It is also worth noting that there is no direct line of sight between the new school and the cannabis establishments, as the new school is around the corner and blocked by Mardens. In order for all of our Main Street businesses to safely be able to transition to adult use, the buffer for businesses operating before the ordinance change would have to be 500 feet. Thank you very much for your service to the city and carefully considering our concern, and please direct any question you have to Alex. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Shaleen and council members. My name is Joe Couture, I live at 345 Scribner Boulevard in Lewiston, been a Lewiston resident my entire life. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'd just like to, again, point out that all of our existing locations, Medco locations, are fully compliant with current Lewiston ordinance. Our closest location that Joey just mentioned, at 741 Main Street, closest to that new school, would, as, as well as, oh, sorry, is well above, that is, the current 750-foot buffer along the ordinary course of travel. All of our locations would remain compliant with this, with the current ordinance, and would not be prevented from future city licensure. The changes that we're speaking about today would prevent future state licensure once we decide to convert to an adult-use market. The State of Maine Adult-Use Statute states that a municipality may not authorize the operation of a marijuana establishment within the municipality if the marijuana establishment is proposed to be located within 1,000 feet of the property line of a pre-existing public or private school, except that if a municipality ordinance or other regulation prevents, sorry, prohibits the location of marijuana establishments at distances less than 1,000 feet, but not less than 500 feet from the property line of that pre-existing school. The lesser distance would apply here. So we, we know that this information would have been helpful and useful to have earlier in the ordinance discussion, and we would have gladly brought this up at previous city council meetings had we noticed this sooner. With this nuance being unusual and potentially not affecting us for some time, once we were to convert to that adult use, we only recently just put this together, and I would just urge the members of the council to take this into consideration when finalizing these decisions. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your time.
Mayor Shaleen and members of the Lewiston City Council, my name is Alex McMahon, I live at 46 Lisbon Street, and I am one of the Medco Partners. I would first like to thank you for the ongoing work you've done on the ordinance, I know there are many other topics that you're working on, and I appreciate the, the council taking the time to work on the seemingly never-ending topic of cannabis policy. I would also like to thank you for allowing my partners and me the time to present our testimony. I know you've heard a lot from us today and over the past week, and I would have not have taken up so much of your time were this not extremely important. I've been in discussion with the State Office of Marijuana Policy, and I believe I have a solution that could prevent this business-closing event from happening to Medco's Main Street operations, while at the same time adhering to the will of the council by preserving the initial intent of the ordinance change, specifically the requirement of a 1,000-foot buffer between any new cannabis business in the city and any pre-existing schools. I would like to propose a new paragraph be added to Section 21 that would read as follows, and this is the same language that Director Hediger passed around. Marijuana businesses with active or pending city licenses prior to the effective date of the ordinance may be sighted no less than 500 feet from the lotlines of pre-existing schools or childcare facilities, measured as a buffer from the property line of the school or childcare facility to any portion of the marijuana business. This proposed language would allow us and other businesses who may find themselves in similar situations to transition to adult-use licenses with the state when the time comes. Along with the other proposed changes to the ordinance, this proposed language would still set the buffer distance from schools for new cannabis businesses at 1,000 feet, as intended by the council. I'm confident that this added language would have zero public impact, and I'm certain that it would avoid unintentionally restricting existing Lewiston businesses. I humbly ask you to vote to add this language, or language of similar effect, to the Lewiston City Ordinance. I look forward to continuing to collaborate with the city of Lewiston for many years to come. Thank you again for your time and thoughtful consideration, I'd be happy to answer any questions or clarify anything that you may have. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Back to the council for discussion?
Move the question for the amendment, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
So we'll be voting on the amendment, as Counselor Clement noted, so Counselor from Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
And word 5?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
And Madam Clerk, we are now back to the original motion.
Yes, so we're back to the main motion as amended, are you ready for that vote?
Please.
Great. Counselor from Word 6?
Uh, sorry, discussion from the council? Counselor Harriman?
So, am I correct in, in understanding that these aren't going to be split up into separate votes as we did last time?
Right, correct, so the, the motion that the council just adopted is the adoption of Paragraphs 3A and 3B, the, the new ones. And so now those are incorporated into the final motion that's pending before you right now.
Okay, and that, the final motion, including the change that we made last time, and, and the other components of it?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to go on the record saying that I'm, I'm planning to vote no on this. I do have, I do believe that some of the adjustments are an improvement, but overall, I just don't see the logic in, in this, these sorts of regulations anyway, where other, other types of businesses are not regulated in a similar way. Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify the reasoning for that.
Counselor LaChapelle?
Yes, I just wanted to take a moment and thank the gentlemen from Medco. Out of the 13 active licenses in our city, this is the only company that has taken the time to come and address it, that, and come at the council level. They might have been working with Director Hediger, I just want to commend your, your activity in the community. I know you're heavily involved in the community in donating and, and just being involved as a company, as an industry for the city of Lewiston, you are to be commended, as far as I'm concerned. When I drive up the streets in Lewiston and I look at the facilities, oftentimes you've taken facilities that are not in great shape at all, and you've turned them around and you've made them good-looking buildings. You've invested a lot of money, and you've made it an asset to the community, just from the appearance on the outside. And I can go down, we're looking at Lisbon Street, the old pine tree trading, and the amount of money that they're putting into that facility, and just the old McDonald's, holy cow. So I just commend you as an industry, I hope you form some kind of a, an association or something like that to protect your industry. I just had the opportunity to say thank you, and you're doing a good job.
Further discussion from the council? Counselor Jalinas?
I would just concur with my colleague, Counselor LaChapelle. You know, I, I know how involved you've been in the community, your involvement with the Chamber of Commerce, for example, and I really also applaud the effort that you've all taken to educate our community. I participate in a civic organization where someone came and spoke to our group and just really looked at educating, you know, people out there about the cannabis industry, so I want to applaud you for that effort as well, thank you.
Madam Clerk, we have not gone to public comment for this motion, have we?
Not for the main motion.
Public comment. Back to the council for discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
No.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 6 to 1.
Thank you very much. Agenda item number 5.
Item number 5, receipt of recommendations from the Finance Committee and the Planning Board on the Fiscal Year 2023 Lewiston Capital Improvement Plan Budget. Requested action to receive and review the recommendations from the Finance Committee and the Planning Board regarding the Fiscal Year 23 Lewiston Capital Improvement Plan.
May I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Clement, followed by Counselor LaChapelle. Discussion? Public comment? Back to the council? Counselor Scott?
Thank you. I just want to commend our Finance Committee and our Planning Board for such well-thought-out responses and suggestions. This is not an easy job, and I know, after being on the Planning Board last year and the year before that, that this is really looked at very closely with a fine-tooth comb, and I, I just want to say that I, I commend those committees for doing the hard work and really giving some good suggestions, I really appreciate it, thank you.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Item number 6.
Item number 6, resolve adopting the Fiscal Year 2023 Lewiston Capital Improvement Plan. Requested action that pursuant to Article 6, Section 606E of the City Charter, the City Council hereby approves the resolve adopting the Fiscal Year 2023 Lewis, City of Lewiston Five-Year Capital Improvement Program as prepared by the City Administrator.
Move for passage, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Clement, followed by Counselor Peace. Discussion? Any comment from Administrator Hunter?
No, Mr. Mayor, this is just the, the planning document that puts it on file. The actual appropriation of funds will come the first meeting of June.
Thank you. Public comment? Back to the council? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item number 7.
Item number 7, order authorizing the Public Works Department to prohibit vehicles with a gross vehicle weight greater than 23,000 pounds from certain roads for the period from March 2nd, 2022 to May 1st, 2022. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the Public Works Department to prohibit vehicles with a gross weight greater than 23,000 pounds from certain roads for the period from March 2nd, 2022 to May 1st, 2022.
May I have a motion? Counsel, Counselor Harriman, followed by, I believe, Counselor Clement. And before we have a discussion from the council, I notice that we have Director Brenchik here. Is there anything you'd like to say?
No, it's just that time of year again, and again, to, you know, clarify to the public, when you have fuel deliveries or emergencies, those are all exempt from something like this. We put up the temporary signs for the streets that we think are the most affected, and then they come down when they can, so we, we pull them as soon as we can, we're protecting the pavement and the longevity of that from the thaw, the thawing and frost season.
Am I to understand that we do this every year?
Correct.
Well, now I know. Further discussion from the council? Counselor LaChapelle?
Director, I want to thank your department, your, to, at being flexible at times, as somebody that's trying to develop property, have concrete come in, to have forms come in, to have material dropped off. Your department is more than willing, looking for the colder days and first thing in the morning, not in the afternoon, so they do work, they do work within the community and work with the- So, they do work within the community and work with the builders. So, I commend that. So, it's not just etched in stone that you can't drive anything. So, I encourage you to continue in that manner and make life a little easier for somebody that's trying to do some work within our city. Thank you.
Counselor Jalinas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director, I just wonder, the 16 roads that are posted, are those the same 16, or how much variance is there in those annual postings?
Depends when it was last paved and what the condition of that road is. These did not change from last year, but I know they're looked at every year.
Okay, thank you.
Public comment? Back to the council for discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Agenda item number 8.
Item number 8, Resolve: Directing the City Clerk to Publicly Post a Notice of Intentions to Lay Out and Alter Nob Hill Avenue. Requested action: Resolve: Directing the City Clerk to publicly post a notice of intentions to lay out and alter Nob Hill Avenue.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
Counselor McCarthy, followed by Counselor Pease. Discussion? Public comment? Sorry, may I have?
Sorry, City Engineer, Jeff Bowley.
Oh, okay, yeah, sorry. I apologize for not recognizing you.
Oh, that's okay.
Yes, would you like to say anything at this time?
Just that this will be back before you next week, our next meeting for the actual approval. This is just your notice to... Approval of the notice to be posted for the condemnation to relocate the road. We're not really relocating the road, it's just correcting an error that dates back to the 1962 description of the road, where there was a 10-foot discrepancy in where the curve actually is that doesn't match all of the property pins and where the road actually is. So, this corrects a 60-year-old problem that legally putting the road where everybody's always thought it is. The basic description.
Better late than never. We're currently at public comment. Any public comment? Back to the council for discussion. Counselor McCarthy?
Do you expect any opposition to this?
I really don't. I'm a resident of Nob Hill myself, and we sent out notices to everyone on the street about a week ago. I've only heard from one person, so I'm not aware of any issues.
Thank you.
What did that one person say?
Just a basic question of, how is this going to affect me? Which is very minimal.
Gotcha. Further discussion? Counselor Pease?
So, how did this come about and know to find out that there was a discrepancy?
So, it dates back to 2019. Mr. Horn at 10 Nob Hill was hired a surveyor to separate his lot from one into two lots so he could build another house. And that surveyor went back and actually plotted out the original description, which starts out at Webster and follows meets and bounds along the edge of the road. And it didn't match up with city parcel maps, and he came to us, and we've been trying to figure out for a couple of years now of how to actually fix it. And working with the city attorney, we've come up with a solution that we think will correct all the issues on the street, and so it won't be a problem coming up for somebody in the future that wants to do something on their property.
Good, thank you.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
I'm sorry, your last name again, sir?
Bowley.
Thank you, Engineer Bowley. Have a wonderful evening. Agenda item number 9.
Item number 9, Order: Authorizing Execution of Municipal Quick Claim Deeds for Real Estate Located at 11 Tampa Street and 257 Lincoln Street. Requested...
Please continue.
Requested action: To approve the order authorizing execution of municipal quick claim deeds for real estate located at 11 Tampa Street and 257 Lincoln Street.
May I have a motion? Counselor Pease, followed by Counselor Clement. Discussion? Public comment? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Item number 10.
Item number 10, Reports and Updates.
Reports and updates from the council? Counselor Scott?
Yes, thank you. So, I just want to report on a school committee meeting that we had last night. I'm... So, this was a packed-room school committee meeting that we had last night. We had a discussion on potentially changing the mask requirements. The room was packed, and as of this morning, when I looked, and I generally do look at these things, there was over 1,100 views on the YouTube video. I was... I don't think I've ever seen that on a school committee meeting, that many people watching in less than 24 hours what had happened and what the conversation was. The superintendent was making recommendations last night on making it optional for parents to make the decision on masking, beginning on Monday, March 7. There was a long discussion, we actually discussed this for over three and a half hours. Heard a lot of comment from the public, comments from staff members, comments from the teachers' union, and the superintendent, a couple of weeks ago, had sent a survey out to parents to find out what their opinion may be. In his survey, we got 2,000 responses back. That is also something that I've never seen, having been on the school committee and was there for six years. Never did I see a response like that, that many people responding, and it was 72% of that survey that wanted optional masking. It became a very contentious conversation last evening, but I will tell you that contention is probably not the correct word. There was a lot, a lot of conversation, but it may have been the most civil conversation I have ever seen in regards to masking in any school committee meeting that I've been witnessing and seeing across the country. I was actually quite impressed with everybody's comments and the conversation that happened. The reality is, is that we were never going to receive a perfect decision, in my opinion. There was a 50-50, literally, in that room of people saying, "I want you to keep it, I want you to make it optional for me." There was 50-50 when teachers were asked by their union, "We want to keep it, we want to have the option if we want to have it or not." The number of phone calls and comments that I received, I got the same, it was pretty much 50-50 down the road. There was concern about it being too soon and this happening too soon, and that was part of our conversation. One of the reasons, and I just want to explain this, one of the reasons that the superintendent looked towards making these changes, the superintendent of schools has been, in my opinion, very much on top of the situation from day one, and they are currently having pool testing done. He gave us some examples last evening that talked about the pool testing that was done in November, December, August. He gave us examples throughout this past school year. At some points during the school year, there were up to 80 kids in pool testing coming back positive, and with that pool testing, they have to go back and retest to see where they... Trace where it is. And there were days where it was overwhelming for staff to keep up with that and go back. And I thanked them because that's a lot of work to do. And the superintendent, in my opinion, kept the schools very safe. Over the last few weeks, and this, to me, was one of the mitigating factors on me making the vote and the decision that I made, and why the superintendent brought this proposal forward, and why he put that survey out there to ask parents their opinion. There have been days just prior to February vacation where that pool testing came back with nobody testing positive. He is seeing a downward trend happening. And I understand that we are still seeing an upward trend. One of... Part of the conversation was using guidance from the federal CDC versus guidance from the state CDC. They are not currently aligned. Federal guidance that just came out on Friday afternoon at 3 o'clock gave different levels of transmission by county. They were low, medium, and high. Andiscoggin County still, at that point, was registering high. One of the concerns that I had in looking at that information and looking at all the information on this, and I did do a lot of research on this, is that over the past couple of weeks, the main CDC has also had to put in an exorbitant number, up to and over 11,000 COVID cases. They were backlogged from January in the Omicron cases, which actually made our numbers look a lot higher than possibly what they actually are sitting right now. I also looked at hospital rates, I looked at intensive care rates, and I looked at those that have to use the... To be on the ventilators. Currently, our numbers as of Friday, and this was according to the Portland Press-Pale, the Brangor Daily, I think it is, the Kennebec, I looked at several different resources. We were down 58% in hospitalization as of last Friday, and the number of people in the This was a very difficult decision, and I stated this several times last night, I think it was a very difficult decision, and I commend what everybody did and the conversation that they had. My purpose in doing what I voted for last night, and I voted in favor of making it optional. For me, that was something that I felt very strongly about. I felt that it was, it should be parents' choice from last year, when this first conversation started happening. But I also take great responsibility in our role as a community, in a community, and the responsibility that we have towards everybody in our community, and I felt that we needed to really look at this in a compromise level and not just make a decision for those that want to keep it and those that want to have the choice. We had to find a median in the middle. And when it looked 50-50, and that's what we were seeing last night, we did make the decision that, at this point, if the superintendent sees any numbers go up, up until Friday, and they're having pool testing done all this week, and he sees a drastic change in the reduction that he had been seeing, he's not going to do it next Monday and make that optional on Monday, we're going to wait another week and make it on the 14th instead. And the school committee felt that the responsibility of the superintendent making that decision at this particular time, we were all comfortable with that decision. But if it was going to have to be further conversations, or we saw a massive uptick in the county again, if the numbers didn't come back from the CDC on Friday, which is when he generally gets his numbers, they were going to be very high again and showed high status, that we were going to have to revisit this conversation again. I know this doesn't make everybody in the community happy, and I know, like I said, this was such a very tough, in my opinion, contentious issue to have to discuss because there was no way we were going to make everybody happy. But I have to say that I am very proud of the discussion that was had last night and the way this was handled, and that's why the vote was the way that it was, and that's why the conversation happened, and that's why the decision was made the way it was. If anybody has any questions on that particular, I can try to answer them. I understand, you know, I really appreciated the number of people that came out to speak last night. Representative Cludier was there, Representative Connor was there, there were several staff members, there were nurses in the community, nurses that worked at CMMC, there was parents there, and we had a lot of students there, too, that stood up and told us that, "We don't wear this mask anywhere, but in our schools. We're not wearing it anywhere else in the community." And to me, that was also, I take... It's very important to me to hear from the students as well that are living this experience and being in those school environment, and I took that with a lot. It meant a lot to me. So, that's where we're at with that. I don't know if anybody has any questions, but I do want to say that the superintendent was going to set out another memo this afternoon to explain this to parents, and I know that he would welcome any questions that any of you have in regards to what's happening and further explanation that maybe I can't quite cover, but that's the gist of what the conversation was on that. I will also say that we also had our first reading last night on the Pledge of Allegiance policy. The Pledge of Allegiance policy was brought to our attention by several students who addressed the school committee in respect to updating the policy, where it was more in align with what the current state standards were. The policy at the time that this was pointed out to us, who had not been looked at since 2012, and the policy committee did meet and look at it, and they made the decision, and with the help of the students and staff members, to go with what the state language is exactly on the policy. And that policy says specifically that the Pledge of Allegiance will be said in every school. It is the superintendent's responsibility to ensure that this Pledge of Allegiance is said every day, that it is said in every classroom, but that those that choose not to stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance can sit, but they cannot disrupt the classroom. There was even conversation last night about possibility of them leaving the classroom, so... And I will tell you that I fought against that because I thought it was important that we show respect. That was my, again, what I felt was an important thing to do. And we voted unanimously to accept the first reading of the Pledge of Allegiance policy. We also will be starting, and we had a few field trips last night, and we actually, because of the long discussion that we had on the masking, we postponed two particular items, which is an educational report that'll have to do with our budget that we are actually going to have tomorrow evening, and also that we are getting ready to discuss what's called Plan, Assess, Act, and Repeat, which is an emergency planning schedule for how to handle major situations in our school. And tomorrow evening, we begin the budget process, and that's at 5:30 at Connor School. It's open to the public, and we get our budget books, and we will get a budget overview, and then we will be meeting twice a week, starting next week, every Monday and Wednesday. That's where I'm at. Thank you.
Any further updates from the council? Counselor Herrmann? Yes, Counselor Herrmann?
I just wanted to share that since our last meeting, I had an opportunity to complete an implicit bias exercise and have a nice conversation with Director Hugh, and I thought it was very insightful and educational, and I just would encourage all my fellow counselors to do the same if they haven't already.
Counselor LaChapelle?
I want to thank Counselor Scott for that informative explanation of what happened last night. Thank you very much for that information. Also, Administrator, did we know about Richard Maines passing? Are you familiar with Richard Maines? He's in tax office?
Yes, I am very familiar with Richard. No, I didn't.
He passed.
Okay.
He passed with COVID. He had multiple health problems.
Right.
He was a longtime tax assessor.
Yep.
Just a really good man.
Yep.
A really good man.
I'm sorry to hear that. Thank you for letting us know.
Yeah, they had his ceremony on Saturdays, the Celebration of Life, at Pathway Vineyard in Lewiston. It was a packed house, so it spoke well of his stance within the community. He was just a nice guy, so I'd just share that, a former employee.
Thank you.
Further updates? Next agenda item?
Let's see, item number 11, Any Other Business Counselors or Others May Have Relating to Lewiston City Government.
Seeing none? Next agenda item?
Next agenda item, let's see, item number 12, Executive Session to Discuss Property Acquisition. Requested action: To enter into an executive session pursuant to main revised statutes annotated Title I, Section 405, 6D, to discuss a property acquisition.
May I have a motion? Counselor Pease, followed by Counselor Herrmann. Call the vote?
Yep, Counselor from Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
No.
Word five?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of six to one.
We're heading into executive session. We will not be coming back. Have a wonderful evening, Lewiston.